Good evening, everybody. This is Monday, July 19th, 2021, and we are about to start our monthly or bimonthly school board meeting. It is 6:04 PM, and I will call this meeting to order. First item of business is to do roll call. Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derricks?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tiff?
Here.
And Chair is here. If you would join me, we'll stand and say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not going to be reading this evening. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. Thank you. The agenda has been in the board book. Does anyone have any changes or deletions? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Bryant? Do I have a second? Second for Ms. Tiff. Any other discussion? We'll start the roll call vote then with Ms. Tiff. Aye. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
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 Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the agenda passes 7-0. All right, first up is recognitions and, well, educational plan, that's in our board book as always. I will call your attention to that. And then next is recognitions and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share this evening? Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just thought I'd point out a couple of things. It's always good to recognize current or upcoming or even graduates of our Red Wing school system. Want to acknowledge the Red Wing Trap Team for Winning State. Wonderful job. Smiling, happy pictures I saw on Instagram and that and then read in the paper, too. And for somebody that doesn't know it, I like to golf and there's a young man that graduated in 2019 from Red Wing, Mr. Cecil Blile. He last week won the Minnesota State Open, which is the biggest golf tournament for amateurs and pros in the state of Minnesota. So he's 19, well, he graduated in 19. He's 20 years old, attending college. Just a young man who is someone who followed his passion, his hope, his dreams, playing golf and at the collegiate level. And who knows where the next step will take him out of that. So as a school board member, community member, I want to congratulate the Trap Team and Mr. Blile for their success. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Well said. Any other recognitions or upcoming events? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is meant to be three minutes per person. School board members listen to public comments, but we will not discuss topics at the meeting. The superintendent and/or board chair may provide a response outlining steps the school district has taken or will take to address concerns. And we expect comments to remain respectful and appropriate and not identify any current or former students, their families, or staff members by name. And this evening, I do not have anybody here in person for public comment, and I've not received anything electronically either. So we will move on to school board reports. Finance Committee, any updates?
I just talked to that.
Yep.
Okay. Um, we don't have any updates as of June 28th, do we, Jackie?
Not since the notes that are in the board packet.
Okay. And we haven't met, we'll meet in a couple of weeks?
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, good. Operations?
Nothing to report here. We haven't met since early June. Our next meeting is in early August here.
All right, personnel. We met just this afternoon at 3:45. And pretty much everything we discussed will be brought up later in our agenda. So I won't really go through any of that right now. Legislative and Policy Committee, any updates?
Um, we just met here just before the meeting here. Not a lot to report. We just reviewed several things. They're getting back to some of the policies are in tonight's agenda that we just reviewed them a little bit more. That's probably all I can cover at this time.
Sounds good. Negotiations Committee. We're starting to get all of those groups scheduled. I believe we've got the Custodians scheduled or about two for the beginning of August. I know that we're working on dates for Cooks right now, so that's where we're at kind of just to, we're just starting preliminary preliminarily with those schedules. Any other committees or meetings that we should be informed about? Anybody else?
Ah, the GCED met?
Okay.
Yes, and in your packet, there's a huge update provided by Sherri.
Okay.
Of what we discussed there. And a lot of it was just kind of updates from their policy book and different things like that. So nothing too major.
Okay.
But if you want to go through the packet, the updates are in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we have questions, we can call yours, Sherri.
Exactly. And then we meet again Thursday.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other things? Any other groups, meetings that anyone would like to report on? All right. This is easy. Administrative reports.
My full report's in the board packet, so I won't go over things item by item. But I do want to talk about attendance zones and transportation information because that is a huge topic for parents and staff members. We did receive the first draft of attendance zones for elementary schools. They are sending a second draft tomorrow morning. And then administrators will be reviewing the assignments to make sure there aren't any clear mistakes as far as who will go to which elementary school. After that, we'll be able to notify parents of their assignments and then also notify teachers of where they'll be working, teachers and parent professionals. So it's the middle of the summer already, and obviously, we want to get this information out as soon as possible. We were not able to do it earlier because we need transportation to run that data. They're the ones with the mapping system, and so they're the ones who can define the attendance zones. So we're making progress, but we still have a little, a few things left to do. Also, we've come up with some preliminary school hours. And just a reminder that we're planning to have the high school start earlier in the day. And I was really hoping to get it around 8 o'clock. Right now, the latest version has the high school starting at 7:50, but I'm going to keep looking at it. The elementary will start a little bit after 9 o'clock. And then, you know, a similar situation in the afternoon. Right now, I'm concerned about the starting time for high school kids and the length of the day for elementary kids. To make the transportation system work to work out, we had to lengthen the day of the elementary fairly significantly. And so kids would be getting out at the elementary level at 4:10, which is significantly later in the past. So, and that's assuming high school starts at 7:50. So we're going to try to keep working on it, but I just want to let you know that those are the rough times. That's all I have. Oh, except I'll point out the future workshop topics. The, in July, we're planning to give a brief update about some of the work we've been doing at Equity. So we won't go over the whole plan, but we'll talk about some of the things that we've done over the last couple of months as we prepare for next year. And then Jennifer and Anna asked for some time to talk about community feedback sessions regarding the Equity Plan and probably other school topics, so we'll discuss that as well. I'm trying to make arrangements with an entity that provides kind of, or at least describe the hallmarks of an anti-racist organization. So, and we work with a place called EAB, which used to do research for colleges, but they've expanded to K-12 schools. And so they're just a researcher. You know, they're not advocates for different things. They do the research and then share best practices or summaries of things. And so I'm hoping they can participate in 20 to 30 minutes on Monday night and just talk about their research or their summary of what an anti-racist institution looks like. It has not been confirmed yet, so we'll see if that can happen this coming Monday or another Monday. And then in August, we are planning to review student discipline as well as recruitment and hiring practices, again with an equity lens in mind.
Any other updates? Administrator line?
That's it for now.
Okay, I just want to point out that Mr. Bryant can hear us, but he's having some internet issues and so his picture is not on the screen currently. But he can hear us. Mr. Bryant, can you, can you speak so we can hear you?
I can, I can see you, but can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, so you don't need to look at me anyway, so I'll just keep going as I am.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you could hear us and we could hear you. All right, the consent agenda is in your board packet. Does anybody have any changes or things that they would like to call? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. So Holly has made the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'm your second. I'll second. Second by Ms. Tiff. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll start the roll call vote with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derricks?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So the consent agenda passes 7-0. Do we need a separate resolution for the Minnesota State High School resolution?
No, it can be cleared.
That's a part of it. Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to not miss that. So then we have donations and grants.
I'd like to thank Cheryl Copeland for $100 donation for the Twin Bluff Playground as well as the Red Wing Shoe Foundation for a donation of $5,700 for the Park Naturals program. So thank you to both Cheryl and the Shoe Foundation.
Lovely, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to accept those donations and grants. I will make a motion.
I'll second that.
Jennifer made the motion. Holly seconded. Any other discussion? We'll start the roll call vote with Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derricks?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So we're going to do a roll call passes. Thank you. All right, under business items, first reading of policy changes.
Yeah, the Policy Committee has been busy for the last several months, and we have some proposed policy changes for the board to consider. The first meeting, when we present them, is called the first reading. We'll also have a second reading, and then at a subsequent meeting, we'll have a proposal to approve the different policies. So we have three different meetings just to make sure that we get input from everyone who has a stake in what's happening. Most of the policy changes that are listed here are related to the designations for the ADA and Section 504 coordinator. We've talked about that at multiple meetings and kind of gone back and forth between who should be doing what. And so we landed on what's proposed in those policies. We also have some very good changes in Policy 503 in terms of student attendance and what's excused absences. In terms of, for example, cultural traditions is now listed as an item as a suggested change. I think that makes a lot of sense because in past years, we've, you know, excused those kinds of absences, but they've been marked as vacation on all the attendance forms. Well, you know, I think it's different than vacation, and so we did add that category for cultural traditions. Kind of to coincide with that, we also made some changes in terms of religious holidays, too. So you can see that in the policy change. And then finally, because we went to a seventh period day at the high school, we did change Policy 613, graduation requirements. Those changes are based on information that Principal Nemeth shared with me. Again, this is just first reading, and we'll come back at the next meeting for the second reading, and then a subsequent meeting is for approval.
So no action is needed at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have first reading. I'm just going to make my comments on these policies. I've said it before. I still continue to say that our human resource officer, I don't think is the right person to be handling Title IX and human rights when it applies to students. So for that reason, when the time comes, I will be opposed to the wording on Policy 102 because it's mentioned there and references students. 522 and 528, once again, Title IX is mentioned there with the human res- I have not seen any training or information to justify that that person is trained to deal with student issues. So I will stand to that as we continue on in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? All right, next on the agenda is the Goodview County Education District Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan.
Alan is present to give a brief description of this particular plan, and we're here to answer any questions that may arise.
Good evening, everyone. We're moving right along here, so I'll keep, keep it short and sweet. First off, I'm going to go through the long-term, the 10-year long-term plan for GCED. Can you blow it up? There's, there you go, Lisa. Can everyone see it? I hope you all had a chance to look at it kind of before, beforehand here, but we'll go over it. On the Category 1 here, you can see that's our health and safety. As we move down to Category 5, that's more the LTFM broke down into different codes. I got two big numbers that I really want to share with you. As we go across the board, you can see there ain't a lot of big changes, maybe a 2%, 3% difference throughout the years as we go just for the, you know, inflation, things of that nature. The two big numbers I want to go over with are in 2021. If you look at the 363 Health and Safety Code, the fire safety, that $27,778. That was when we went from the horn-stroke system in GC in River Bluff to the voice command, voice automation. That helped out just in that atmosphere. Instead of when the horns went off and blaring loud, it's more of a voice command to leave the building. So that, that's where that number was, is kind of high there. And then the other number is if you go to the 2024 column in Category 5 Building Envelope, you'll see that $183,000. That number is for building tuck pointing and waterproofing. We have that number built in there with the building being nine, eight, nine years old now, and it's in pretty good shape. We just have it stuck in year 2024. We can adjust that if we want to move it out into the, you know, 2026, 2027. But we just put it in 2024 because the recommendation is really 10 to 15 years. You should do some tuck pointing. So we'll take a look at that when that comes. That's all I really have on that. It's pretty self-explanatory. You know, asbestos CC0s in there, of course. It was built. We don't have any asbestos in there, so we don't have to worry about that. Maybe one more item is the accessibility, and I got $1,000 in there and just kind of increments up a little bit. That's just for outdoor push buttons for handicap. It's all ADA accessible over there already. But if we have to replace a button that's bad or rusted, things of that nature, we just put a little bit of money in there. So otherwise, all the numbers are relatively even across the board. Them are the two big ones I wanted to share. The other one is the, if you don't have any questions on that, I'll go to the 10-year co-op and just go through that quickly.
I do have one question, Alan, but for one. The 379 interior surfaces, the $15,450, 421, and then it goes up from there each year. Can you explain what those interior surfaces are?
Interior surfaces are going to be more for, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a detailed description of some of the interior surfaces.
Yeah, Alan, Jackie has that information right at her fingertip here.
Yeah. Interior surfaces are things like walls. We have clientele over there who occasionally put holes in the wall. So it would be for repainting if it needs it. I mean, just regular upkeep, but it'd also be for repair of the walls when things of that nature happen.
Probably walls and doors.
Walls and doors, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go, if I can have Lisa, if you can put up the other one. And this is the, this just is the six district co-op. And it's just Jackie breaks it down into a percentage per student per year, and then it breaks out that number of what each district gives. I think, Jackie, you can probably explain it a little bit better than me, but that's, that's the basis of it. It's just, you know.
Yeah. Each, we use estimated ADM for each district. Take a, divided by the total in the county to see what percentage of estimated ADM each district has, and we split up the proposed LTFM cost.
And the only other one I have is in there. It's in the packet is the resolutions that just need to be signed. So that's all that is. So that's all I got. Any questions?
Again, the recommendation is to approve the resolution approving School District Number 6051 Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan. And just as an FYI, 6051 is the district number for the Goodview County District. So if we could have that motion in second, and then we'll go from there.
I will make the motion to approve the resolution approving School District Number 6051 Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan.
I will second, and my name was only in the queue to make the motion, so no discussion for me.
Sorry. All right, so we have the motion by Jennifer, seconded by Hannah. Any other comments, discussion? We'll take a roll call vote, this time starting with Mr. Derricks.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So the resolution passes 7-0. Next up is the review of policies.
You know, really, this is just for information only because the Policy Committee has already reviewed the policies that are listed. One point that I will add, though, is that the Inclusive Education Plan or Policy 1000 will be considered quite a bit when we have an Equity Discussion about curriculum and staff development and those kinds of things. So there'll be a more in-depth review of that. But really, we do not need board action because the committee's already reviewed those policies.
Any questions? The policies are listed in your board book, 413, 506, 514, 522, 524, and 1000. Okay, moving right along. School Board Pay Plan.
At the last meeting, I included this information in the School Board Procedures Manual, but I think wisely, it was suggested that we pull it out as a separate item. And so we started talking about this several months ago as far as coming up with a three-year plan on how to increase board pay. That means that we'll be able to have the plan in place before people decide whether they want to run for school board, before they've taken office. And it will save some time at the reorganization meeting each year. So again, I just threw out an idea just to kind of, to get us started. Certainly, the board can make a motion to make adjustments in that chart there as far as potential pay.
So let's open it up for discussion. Thoughts on the chart that is before you? And again, we just needed a jumping off point, so this is just something to stare at. It was talked about several years ago to, you know, slowly increase pay about $200 a year until we get to where we're somewhat comparable to other districts. And, you know, while this is a difficult conversation to have about our own pay, it is important to think about because, as we've discussed in earlier conversations, it's difficult for people to come forward and want to do this position if they're going backwards. People have jobs that they might have to take off for or childcare or any number of things. And so we'd like to, over time, just increase a little bit each year to kind of get us backed up to what makes maybe better sense. So Arlen, I see you're in the queue, and then Holly and Nikki. Go ahead, Arlen.
Thank you. Thank you. I am opposed to the pay plan as is put out here for a few different things. One, I don't think we had a discussion whether there should be extra pay for the vice chair or the treasurer. I don't feel the duties are that much extra for those two positions, but they are. It should be a discussion of the board whether there should be and how much, not just something that's, I'm not quite sure how this got put out here. The other is, I don't know if the pay plan, $200 increases the right amount of money. I still feel that school board members are way underpaid for the amount of work that they're doing in this district, and it's not going to really affect me much. And it's not going to really affect me much. I got one more year after this, so, but I don't think the numbers are right. And I. Personally, I don't think it needs to be discussed that much here at this time before the first of the year. But if that's what the board's going to do, I'm going to know as the way it's worded right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. Holly?
I think it's good to have a long-term plan and a long-term vision of what it could look like for future people who want to run for school board and kind of know what they're getting into. I think next to it, it should put the amount of hours they can probably do spend. So it gives the public and a potential member kind of an idea of what this really looks like. I agree with you, Arlen, if it could, should be more. I say if we stick with at least the minimum wage of $15 that we're trying to pose across the country. That's now unfair. So if we're at $16 an hour, which it looks like, I get it. But I like the idea of a long-term, this is what it could look like. And if something happens where we need to freeze it, we have the ability to freeze it for a year. We're in a really tough financial place, right? You know, we're going to freeze school board members' salaries for the upcoming year. Everybody knows what the freeze looks like, you stay at that, and then decide if we're moving forward, just so that we can play with it a little bit. And it's not a, well, the school board still gets their raises when everybody else doesn't. That's not very good. So let's kind of where my thoughts are, Arlen.
Thank you. Nikki?
Why did I have a different response when I first joined the board? I think it was like our first or second meeting. We had this, the first initial discussion about this as per, you know, me joining. You know, I'm like, oh, I just don't, but after, woo, after going through, we're not even through, pulling through, through a full year yet. And, and wow, I definitely agree with Holly. I like the setup of a long-term plan. I'm, I'm gonna be phasing in and coming out, you know, so I would have to say as. Nobody wants to do this job from Perry Island, you know that? What was, when was the last, I did all my research that I could, if somebody else can correct me, if, if they know, somebody else who joined it in between me and Noah. The second. Nobody has, so like, as an ethnic person, this is not really an ideal job. I've opened up a lot of trauma of my own and, and not only just that, but the historical trauma as we all know and understand about the recent discovery of the. The residential schools and the devastating effects to Indigenous people of Turtle Island. That, that I like to see that number grow for any other potential person who, you know, that. I mean, I kind of knew what I was getting myself in, but it's a whole other ballgame once you get on the inside and you really see what's going on, you know? There's a lot of this and a lot of this, and that can be wearing on some people. So I would have to say, and also with the chair, vice chair, clerk, treasurer, if there's more duties delegated than to what I'm already doing. I've kind of maybe more focused on the community engagement part and engaging with the community. And that takes a lot of extra time on, you know, outside of our meetings. So I, I do have to say, I don't know what any of those positions do, but if, if you're doing more equal or more than what I'm doing, yes, you do, definitely should be getting compensated more than just, you know? So those are just my opinions and views just from start to now.
Thank you, I appreciate that a lot. Nikki, Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Nikki was right, Noah was the last one on there, and I know Noah, I knew Noah, friend. Nice man. So it was great to have Nikki on board now. One of the hardest things as elected people have to do is have a discussion that we're having tonight. I sat on a number of boards. You all know I don't preach to the choir. We all put a ton of time into this. Some put more in it over other times, others put time in more on other times. So, and I think I've been pretty much a staunch believer that a person shouldn't have to go backwards if they want to come up and serve. So I, I agree with, I also agree with Arlen. He said he, it shouldn't be compensated, but then he said we're undercompensated, so I get that. But at the end of the day. We're doing it for a long-term, not just immediate, and we want to get people that are interested, because Nikki, Holly's right. The, the starting pay is way low out there and it's going to continue to rise over time as we get out of this pandemic and get people back to work. So I like the way it's going. We have to start somewhere because it is a longer, the long-term effect than immediate, so I'll support it.
Anybody else? Anna?
So to Nikki's point of not really knowing so much about what some of the positions do, like Nikki, I'm new, and of course, like Jennifer, but Jennifer got a, you know, has been the clerk even right out of the gate. Could those of you who have been chair and vice chair and clerk and treasurer maybe share? I mean, I know we don't want to take a ton of time on this, but maybe just share a little bit about the, the extra time or what you think is fair. So Arlen, you know, I know you were chair for a while. I don't know if you've been vice chair. If you could speak about like what value you think it should be. Just if anybody has input about that, I don't know. But I also understand we don't want to spend a ton of time hashing through it right now, but I'm just interested in. That perspective.
Well, I'll just say really quickly that as chair, obviously, I do, I run the meetings and am. Kind of the spokesperson, if you will, if something's needed in the community. We also have, you know, the agenda committee, so we have that extra meeting a couple of times a month to go over the, the meeting. The superintendent and I, and I know past chairs have done this as well, we frequently talk with the superintendent about what's going on. Or I also have the ability to call and talk to our district attorney at any time with or without the superintendent's knowledge. So I have done that in the past. And so that's the main duties, I guess, in addition to doing the yearly evaluation of the superintendent and then with the addition of the, the mid-year check-in.
And you run the meetings.
And we run the meetings. Arlen, you're in the queue.
Thank you. I have been vice chair. And as part of the reason why I said I didn't feel there was an extra, need for extra pay for the vice chair duties. I have been chair. Pam, you have also been a vice chair, so maybe you can comment on your feelings on the vice chair position. I just don't, I have not been treasurer. I've observed what treasurers do, and maybe I'm missing something, but other than putting your signature on the bank records when you get elected treasurer and a few incidents. Not incidents, a few other things, there's not that much to being treasurer extra from your duties. You are chair of the finance committee, but we all have different people who are a chair of other committees. And that's where I'm coming from, that there, I don't feel there should be extra pay for the vice chair or the treasurer. I think one of the hardest jobs on the board is a clerk. I have not been a clerk, I don't want to be a clerk. Election year. If things go right, it doesn't take an awful lot of extra time. But from your regular duties, but if you ever end up in a contested election, the amount of responsibility that's put on the clerk to do a recount can be tremendous. We're forced, we have Lisa here to help us now, now has been hired. And we'll handle, I think, a lot of the election stuff, but there's still a tremendous amount of responsibility, extra duties that goes with being clerk. And so clerk is a position that maybe isn't even compensated enough in this proposal. I have not been clerk, but I know it's a very, can be a lot of extra work. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I was just going to speak to that about being a clerk. I would say that right now, it isn't a lot of extra work. Obviously, I haven't gone through an election, but right now Lisa does most of the work. She's amazing, and she prepares the minutes, and I then use that, what she's prepared during the meetings to take extra notes and. You know, write down exactly what happens during the meetings, and then she prepares them at the end and we review them together. So it's reviewing minutes, signing minutes, signing other paperwork. So that isn't a lot of extra work, but my understanding is that during the elections, that work will increase. Obviously, I haven't done that yet.
Mr., oh, Kirsten?
Yeah, I just had a couple of points. First, as far as the vice chair, in previous years, I would just be with the school board chair, but this year we started meeting with the school board chair and the vice chair.
Three years, three years ago.
Oh, was it three years ago? Oh, yeah, that's right, because you started doing that. And so I think that expectation, you know, helps justify an increased salary, you know, for the vice chair just because of the regular commitments. In terms of the clerk, I think we're blessed to have Lisa on staff, there's no doubt about it. But during the election season, things will really be busy for both you and Lisa. Plus, there's this responsibility that comes with the clerk, you know, in terms of reviewing the minutes and saying they're okay and that kind of thing. And I think the same is true for the treasurer. So those are just my quick reactions. And, you know, certainly, I'll just throw out a possibility, because it's going to depend on the motion, is you keep the officer rates the same and maybe increase the. Board member salaries instead of 3,700, maybe you could say 4,000, and then 4,200, or no, 4,300, then 4,400 or something. You know, there are variations, you know, literally, I just threw that out in a chart just for starting the discussion.
Well, and I'll just tell you, when I was vice chair and Arlen was chair, I, I didn't know a lot about being an officer, and I just asked to sit in on the meetings because I wanted to learn. I was kind of a silent person at the table, and I just wanted to, I was like a sponge, just licking it all up. I just wanted to learn. So that's, I asked for that. I asked to be able to be, to sit in because I didn't know anything about how to run a meeting. And, you know, if something happened to Arlen and I had to run a meeting, what was that going to be like? What do I need to do? I, you know, I, so I just wanted to learn. So that's kind of how that came to be. It's really not an expectation that we have to have moving forward. I just asked for it when I was the vice chair, and it actually became really helpful in case Arlen wasn't around. Then I was up to speed on what the agenda was, what the topics were, and it was really helpful. And then I think Jim kind of felt the same way and wanted to kind of be, be along so that if something happened to me and he needed to step in quickly, he would be able to do that. And Mr. Bryant, you're in the queue, so I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. I'm not going to talk, I don't like to talk about things I, I do and all that, so. I mean, I, I think I bring value to the chair, vice chair, and, and to the agenda committee, so. And I think Anna talked earlier on the, this whole process, how much research she had done on pay around the state by school boards. And we're not going, let's just not beat this thing to death here, but we're underpaid as a board for all this time you do. I remember one board member told me once, he's no longer here, but he probably got quarter to 50 cents an hour for all his time, so. I'll let you go. So let's call, let's go, let's vote it up or down, one of the two, so in here.
Jennifer? I was just going to say, I would propose that we do increase the directors' pay, perhaps leave the ideas for chair, vice chair, clerk, treasurer, or adjust, but. Instead of 3,700, maybe increase. That to the 39. I, I don't know specific numbers, it makes me a little nervous doing that, but I do feel like the directors, even though they aren't given a position other than being a director, they do a lot of additional work. You know, Nikki talking about the community involvement and, you know, Anna and I have been working on a similar thing. There are other jobs beyond just coming to a meeting that all of us take on and do. And so I think that. As Arlen and Jim and everyone has said, that in order to draw people in, that. Might be better to increase that.
Is that a motion or is that a statement?
It was a statement.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I don't see a motion. I don't see a formal one either. Nikki, you're next in the queue.
I was just going to ask maybe in the future if we couldn't, when it's time to change the chair, vice chair, clerk, treasurer, like maybe have an expectations list and, you know, seeing what maybe people want. I don't, I foresee it, you know, them doing a lot of things, taking direction, you know, squashing, you know, scabbles and, you know, setting up and making sure everybody's in. You know, I, I personally like to just show up and do my job. I'd like to be the worker bee. I don't want to be queen bee, but maybe other people want to be queen bee. Maybe have an expectations list of those, each of those duties. You know, maybe if that makes more people feel comfortable of raising that pay, I don't know.
You know, that's a great idea, and we can put that maybe in the school, school, school handbook that we're working on. But MSBA has a really great list of duties that each of those four positions do, or what they're expected to do. But there's many other things that could go on all of those lists, so that's a really good point. That's a good starting place, the MSBA stuff, but there are many more things that happen. So I'm hearing directors work right now are at 35, and if we start at 39 for '22. 41 for '23 and 43. For '24. We're, I'm seeing heads nod, are we okay with that? Okay.
Is that a motion then?
Well, let's work on the whole.
Okay.
The whole thing before we make the motion. Treasurer is 35 now. What I heard is that there are expectations and extra duties for the treasurer. So are we, do we feel that those numbers in there are fair? I mean, I've never been a treasurer either, so I don't know. Do you want me to answer? Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. So the numbers that are there, you're okay with?
Yeah, and I feel like our positions, I'm not in the queue, but I feel like our positions are as much as we want to put into it.
Yeah.
And as little as we want to do.
Yeah.
So if somebody doesn't do very much, that's their prerogative. Right, but if somebody does a lot more and it comes out to be a dollar an hour, that's their prerogative. Correct? But there is a little bit more expected from the positions.
Correct.
But I do like going up at 39 instead of the 37 for directors.
Sure. I'm okay with all of those other numbers that are before us in that. Grid, does anybody else have anything they'd like to share or add about those numbers? Or are we ready to make a motion on those numbers if we move? The directors to 39 for next year, 41 for the following, and 43 for 2024. Anna, you're in the queue, thank you. Oh, yeah. Anna?
Yeah, okay, so maybe I just answered my own question. But I was trying to see if those numbers are, they're going up just like the 200 a month, or 200 a year, sorry. Not percentage wise, right? Like if what we're talking about right now is we're proposing for 2022, and then the idea is that it would go up $200 a year for each position, not percentage, you know, but $200. Correct?
Well, it looks like everybody's.
I think that's what it is, but I'm just.
Yeah, that's, that's what Pam.
Starting in 2022, so it looks like from now until 2022, there's a bigger jump than $200 for most roles, but then from there on, it goes $200 a year. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the chart as presented with the change of. $3,900 in 2022 for directors, $4,100 in 2023, and $4,300 in 2024. Motion made by Jennifer, do I have a second? Second, seconded by Holly, any other discussion?
Just to clarify, was it 3,900, 4,100, and 4,300?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll start the roll call vote with Ms. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipton?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
I think that was me, and I say aye.
And Mr. Garrett?
No.
And chair votes aye, so that passes 6-1. Thank you for a really good conversation.
Madam Chair, I was just going to throw in the queue when you called the question, just if somebody doesn't want to take the, accept the increase, they don't have to either. They have that, they have that choice that they could do if they wish, so. I did that a number of times as county commissioner, did not take a raise, so. It's up to the individual. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Bryant, that's a really good point. All right, School Board Procedures Handbook.
So we've reviewed this handbook on multiple occasions, different committees have reviewed different sections of the handbook. Based on feedback from the most previous meetings, I did change the designations for the non-discrimination policies, and then also removed the school board pay plan. Just a reminder that there's no document that's perfect. You know, we will continue to adjust, and we can make changes in the document at any time, but at least this is proposed for approval.
Comments, discussion? Arlen?
Thank you. I got issues with a few things again, once again, we have acknowledgement of a person being a human rights or not human. Rights, Title IX and, yeah, human rights, I believe it is. Secondly. We're recognizing an agenda committee, but I don't think this board ever established an agenda committee. It proceeded to being termed that when it was questioned whether it was needed to be posted if two board members were talking about an agenda with the chair and the vice chair at a meeting. On Tuesday morning or whatever day, but that is not. But that is not a position that was, or a committee that was established by the school board, to my knowledge as of now. Uh, the third item is, I think there should be some additional information in meeting preparation. Uh, especially uh, citing the school board, how the meetings are posted and where and stuff, so. That's all I have.
Holly?
Thank you. Um, yes, Arlen, there was an agenda committee formed and we did vote on that. Early on. So um, it's in the notes, I know that. And um, we can talk about it more later at another meeting, but I do know that that committee was formed. And that's kind of where the basis of not a learning experience for the vice chair, but more of an expectation of vice chair to have a voice at the table. So that's kind of where that came from. It represents the full board versus three votes went to the chair, four votes went to the vice chair, you know, the full board kind of gets represented at the table with the superintendent.
I have no problem with having that committee, uh, and I think it makes good sense. Um, and I do remember us having a, a conversation at this table too. I'm pretty sure we uh, voted on that. Uh, we'll have to do some striking updates, I think that was, but I'm pretty darn sure that we discussed that and added that on our committee's assignments. Um, other than that, though, what was the other thing that you were? After that, Arlen?
Title line designation and posting of meetings, I believe.
Posting of meetings.
We still can't hear you.
Sorry. Um, also meeting preparation, there should be a section on posting of our meetings and and, and where and how and who.
That's in the page.
That's on page one, uh, page eleven of the.
One-eleven?
Uh, it's page eleven. It's page one-twenty-eight of the whole packet and page eleven of the um, board procedure manual. Other comments, concerns, questions? Again, I think even though this isn't a draft copy, now we're looking at um, accepting this as our, our first handbook. I think as in any other handbook, it's gonna be up for review on an ongoing basis. Where will that review take place? Is that in policy and legislator? Is that in the agenda committee? Who would be in charge of?
My assumption is that it goes through the legislative and policy committee.
Okay.
But it could be either one.
Okay. Thoughts on that?
I, I do have a thought. I, I would kind of like it to be looked at through the board chair, the vice chair, the superintendent at the committee meeting.
Okay.
Agenda committee meeting and kind of look at it from a different lens than the policies that we use, because that's more directed to what the board were doing.
Yes.
And again, I think either, either one works as long as we have a general understanding.
Yeah, and a final one.
Yeah. Anna?
There we go. Uh, I have read through this a number of times and you know, I think there's always more things that we could add or change, but um, it's a, you know, a living, working document. I think it's good to have something on board and then, you know, as things develop. Um, like I am responsible for the student school board liaisons and there are some things that I would like to change up with that. Um, but this is accurate, I think, for where things are at right now. So I will make a motion to approve the school board procedures handbook as presented.
I have a second. I'll second. Other discussion? Anyone else? Nope. All right, we'll take a roll call vote, starting this time with Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tipton?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
And what, as long as we turn on this topic, then why don't uh, Mr. Bryant and I, I will make sure that that is in my uh, my bag for every time we meet and if you do have changes or things that you highlighted that you think, oh, this is not how we're doing it, or you changed this, please let myself, Mr. Bryant, know and that I will be very happy with that and make sure that it's updated. Every January, we should probably do a lot of this in our organization, we should do, and have ready for every January.
Did I?
Along with every hand book. Or we do the handbooks in the fall or.
Yeah, we do the student and employee ones, maybe from school year starts.
Yeah, but maybe the organization.
The procedural one would be perfectly fine.
So we will do that moving forward. Fabulous. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Anna, I put my cue and Anna and I are, I think, having the same issue. We're, you guys are breaking up, so I, maybe Nikki and Arlen and I experienced the same thing. We're getting like every other word. I know there's some feedback in something in the room there or something coming out when uh, um, we're really, some of you talk, so I don't know what the issue is. I'm assuming the people on the uh, live stream are getting the same feedback too. So there's something going on there. I don't know what it is. Just so you, I just wanted to let you know. I'm not complaining. I wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Talking, like, talk straight to it, because sometimes we'll talk to each other, we might hold the voice that way.
All right, we'll do our, uh, we'll try to, we'll try a couple of things. Do you have something there? Let us know. Can you hear me now?
You're still in and out. You're just like, there's an echo, there's a, there's another microphone or something on, it sounds like. I don't know what it is, but. Um, I can hear Nikki and Arlen and Anna really well and Karsten most of the time really well. I, I, I'm just letting you know, so.
Thank you.
I can hear Holly better than I can hear Pam. Um, Jennifer's a little quiet, um, but I can hear her pretty clearly. Pam, your voice is loud enough, but for some reason, like Jim was saying, like I catch about every other word or something like that.
All right, well, we'll mess around with the quick things here.
Don't worry, Jennifer is taking care of the issue here.
She is.
I'm gonna unplug the microphone and plug it back. Is that better at all?
It is. Uh, just before you uh, turned it off, Pam was coming in really well then. Now she's coming in better.
At all?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Oh.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Sounds pretty good.
Can you hear me now?
Moving on, uh, I can't hear Jim and I could see that he was talking. Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Were you talking?
Uh, yes, I am. Oh, here we are. Can you hear me now?
Okay. There, now I can hear Anna. Jan, try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Oh, now it's true. No, can we?
Can you hear me now? I can. I can hear you.
Just a little bit, Jim, but we're gonna adjust the microphone and speaker.
Try it again, Jim.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Okay, good. All right, thank you. Now, appreciate your, your consideration on this. Thank you.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention. We would not know otherwise, so thank you. Uh, school, that brings us to the very good next topic about uh, meeting locations and mode and how we're gonna, um, we were gonna get together starting in a couple of weeks, but we have an update on that that I will let the superintendent uh, share with you.
Uh, there have been some legislative changes and statutes, some different recommendations from the MSBA. Uh, Pam, Jim and I uh, spoke about those things and the recommendation is to conduct hybrid board meetings until September first, uh, as long as a quorum of members are not physically present, which is true tonight, so worked out perfectly. Uh, in-person board meetings or in-person only board meetings uh, would begin on September first. Uh, and then board meetings will be held in J-110, which is a training center here in the high school. Yeah, that's this room.
I will tell you that Jim and I and Superintendent Anderson looked over all of this information that came out about um, it's statute thirteen D-point-oh-two and it's in your board packet. And if you read all of that, um, and then you read the MSBA um, comment about it, it is very confusing. It's very difficult, I think, to get a clear picture of what they're really trying to say. Um, basically, we focused on sixty days, um, the, a member, sixty days after the removal of the state emergency is what we focused on. That's um, condition B, number two, um, and that sixty days happens to be September first. And so that's why we thought, let's just be safe and um, not have a quorum in person. Um, that way, the community has sixty days to know that we're changing our systems and we will all just be back in person on September first or any meeting starting then um, and thereafter. Uh, if we all happen to come into this meeting room, because we didn't talk about who's coming in, who's not, um, we can go to different rooms in the school and that does constitute um, not in person, because we're not all physically together. Um, and so we, there is a workaround, but um, that's just kind of how we thought we would deal with that. Questions?
And just uh, I'll add on a little bit to that. Uh, the reason it's so important not to have a quorum is that if we have a quorum uh, in person, then we cannot allow people to participate remotely. And so that's why we're, we're doing this, just to give people that flexibility.
So starting on September first, there won't be any computers. We'll be all in person. There will be no hybrid or remote follow-ins.
Yeah, that's my understanding of the statute.
Yes.
Yeah, and we may still, you know, we may still wanna record and livestream how we do now. So we may still have computers, but we would all be physically present using the, the speaker there and the microphone.
And that will probably speed up our meetings, because we won't have to have these roll call votes for everything. It'll be yea or nay.
Right.
Um, and uh, so it'll be good. It's nice to see everybody's faces and get back to normal meetings and so uh, hopefully that will, will, will change that date then. We were gonna re, uh, do all of our in-person meetings starting Sept- August sixteenth. No more. We can uh, do a hybrid until September first, but anything starting September, we're all in person for everything.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I was just gonna bring that up. I, since we made a motion to start August sixteenth, we should probably do a revised motion stating in-person meetings after September first to follow the state statute and the sixty-day requirement to be safe, so. I think that would probably be appropriate, since the board did pass a motion to start the sixteenth. So I'll make that a motion and we'll start in-person meetings, school board meetings and committee meetings September first or after to meet the state statute.
I'll second. Okay. Motion made by Jim, seconded by Holly. Any other discussion? All right. We'll take a roll call vote this time, starting with Ms. Tipton.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that passes seven-zero. Thank you. All right, uh, personnel requests.
Uh, I will say that the personnel committee met uh, shortly before this board meeting and, and recommends a passage of what's recommended in the, in the board packet. Uh, I'd still like to go through each position, a request though separately, real quickly and then, you know, there can be time for uh, questions and answers. Uh, so we are putting in a request to hire five different positions, uh, but we have a funding plan for each one. Uh, the first position is to reinstate the adult programs coordinator. Uh, that's a community education, a funded position that was temporary, temporarily eliminated about a year ago during COVID. Uh, because we're able to provide more adult funding uh, using community ed funds, uh, we believe we can bring back the position will be paid for uh, through those revenues. Uh, the second uh, position was recommended by Principal Nemnich. It's a school safety coordinator. Uh, this person would have uh, more responsibilities than a student monitor or a school home liaison, uh, because he or she would be working with uh, safety and security, uh, especially at the high school, but have some district-wide crisis management responsibilities as well. Uh, and you can see how we're saving uh, money to, to pay for that position. I'll briefly mention it, just so that the public can, can see it. Uh, the plan is to reduce the cost of internal teacher substitutes by twenty-four thousand, uh, reduce a student manager position uh, at a savings of thirty thousand uh, and code ten percent of the position to long-term facilities maintenance, and that's because of his or her work with crisis management. The uh, third position that's recommended is a change in how we uh, provide uh, technology integration in the district. Uh, currently, we have Tony Kashi, who is part-time math teacher, uh, part-time technology integrationist. Uh, we would like to uh, essentially add a position. Uh, so Tony will either be the technology integrationist or math teacher, uh, and then we'd hire, you know, one other individual. Uh, so the recommendation there would be to hire that full-time in a, technology integrationist and hire a full-time math teacher, realizing that Tony will be one of them. Uh, and then we'd also like to, at his request, uh, we'd like to reduce Principal Pagel's uh, stipend to be the director of technology by seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, he wants to transition out of that role. Uh, he was gracious enough, enough to help us this past year, uh, but he wants to start transitioning out, so that's why he requested lower salary. Uh, the, the fourth position is a concession stand manager position. Uh, we've had several iterations of what this could look like. Um, after meeting with Mr. Hartman and Mr. Lexbold, uh, Ms. Wetter, uh, Ms. Perdis, we landed on hiring a concession stand manager at forty-five hundred dollars per year. Uh, and uh, the rest of that description describes how we pay for that. Uh, if we're running short, we can increase the percentage markup on the, the goods that we sell on concession stand. Uh, and finally, uh, the communications manager request. Um, uh, we are requesting to hire a, a forfeits time communications manager and uh, that person would be placed in the program directors or supervisors, uh, conditions of employment in group C. The cost of that position is estimated at about eighty-five and a half thousand, but again, it always depends on the step, you know, that the person would be hired at. So I wanna be crystal clear. It could be less than that, it could be more than that, uh, depending on what uh, experience and skills a, a hired person brings to the table. Uh, and again, you can see uh, how we uh, plan to uh, save some money. Uh, but then the bulk of it, about sixty-two and a half thousand, uh, would be paid for out of federal ESER funds for up to two years. So it's a two-year proposal, uh, but we're very confident uh, that the position will prove its value um, uh, overall, uh, and financially, and so we're confident that'll go into the future, but we realize, you know, this particular plan is for two years, because that's how we have the funding for it. Uh, so again, those are the uh, five different positions uh, that are proposed tonight and uh, some are all of the presenters are on this call in case there are some questions.
Holly, you're in queue.
Thank you. So is the, I, I wasn't at the personnel committee meeting, I tried, um, but I do remember us talking about these at the last um, meeting and I, and I had some time to think about it. My question is, are we gonna be voting on these individually or as one big chunk?
Totally depends on what motion is made. They could be individual, you could uh, authorize or vote or make a motion to, to do three of them, or you could go for all five. It depends on the motion.
Okay, and anybody can make the motion?
Any board member can. I can't.
Right, right. Okay, because personally, I'm in favor of some, but not all. So I don't, I, I know if we make a motion, we would continue to discuss and people can have input and vote yes or no based on a motion that I would make.
Can we ask questions? Can we ask questions before we make a motion?
I, I think we should, to make it easier, it's best to just get all of our comments out first and then make a motion. Otherwise, we have to make friendly motions, make amendments and...
That's totally fine, yeah.
So it's, it's best to just get all of our discussion out now and then come with a very clean motion at the end.
And I, I'm glad you brought that up, because as with any motion, um, after it's made, then board members can suggest amendments to that motion. Uh, and then people vote on the amendment, and then vote on the overall motion with or without those amendments. So, I mean, that's common practice.
Yes, but it gets very wishy-washy and hard to follow. So, Mr. Bryant, though, can help me out with, if we need to do that, but you're in the queue.
Thank you. Yeah, just seeing all these, it's probably best to just do them individually by motion. I think that's probably the cleanest, you know, it'll probably speed things along a little bit, too. Uh, my question, I, I, the positions look interesting. Uh, the financial end of it, you know, we passed a motion to lower our, uh, budget by two-point-two million. Now we're looking at adding people. Uh, I, I know some of the, I'm not opposed to the safety position, but I'm just curious, because we did talk about reducing some substitutes with that two-point-two million dollar cut. And now we're looking at, are we doing it a couple times? And my other question is probably Jackie's on the line here. The other thing is the ESER funds aren't gonna be there forever, and we're using them to fill positions. You know, what's gonna happen when our, if our declining enrollment continues to go drop even more than it is next year? Um, I, I just don't want to add something to it, and we're looking at cutting, and we can't make that cut because we added, you understand what I'm saying? Um, so if you can clarify my mind before I vote on it, that we still are keeping in mind the two-point-two reduction to, to balance our budget, instead of, you know, looking at adding, uh, against what we've already said we're gonna do. So, thank you.
Um, so I'll speak to the School Safety Coordinator first. Um, we had a student monitor in the high school resign. Uh, that is one of the positions we are looking to use to fill this position. Um, basically to retool it. Uh, I, I'm not sure if George is on the line or not, if he can, uh, talk to that at all or not. Um, we also had a significant amount of money set aside for internal staff subbing on their prep period. We're gonna use about two-thirds of that. Um, as George spoke at the Personnel Committee, subbing has changed with the, uh, advent of Google Classroom, to where teachers are loading a lot of their, uh, materials on Google Classroom. So if needed, it may be possible for a substitute teacher to, um, supervise two rooms at a time, instead of just, uh, the one room, if we get in a bind. Um, but that is again, if we get into a bind and, uh, no one picks it up through teachers on call. Um, that is one of his suggestions, and then the ten percent to LTFM, and that covers that position. Um, second was the tech integrationist. We are proposing ESER funds for now, but it also might be, uh, acceptable in our achievement and integration plan, which is ongoing funding, but we can't commit to that right now until MDE approves it. Um, but again, this was, uh, one that was approved, we could cover with ESER funds until we can get it into our achievement and integration plan. With the communications manager, we are, uh, again, proposing ESER funds for two years. The data we're hoping to get back on this is that if we can retain or gain at least eight students beyond our projections, it will pay for this position. So if we can improve our communication out and either retain or gain eight students, um, that will pay for this position when the two years of ESER funding is gone.
And I would add that, um, what we talked about at the Personnel Committee, especially about the communications manager, is that it's an investment in our district. Um, it, it's, uh, I mean, we have a lot of great things going on, and in order to get kids to be excited about coming here, or to draw kids from other districts to come here, because we've got a lot of wonderful things to offer, they have to know about it. And we don't have someone right now that is in that position to really sell what we're doing well. Um, we've got somebody that we hired for, what, fifteen thousand dollars a year? So that's like one day a week that somebody thinks about how to sell Red Wing Public Schools, but nothing else. And Jackie did talk about, you know, if we can get, um, eight new kids or get eight of our kids back, um, that would pay for this position in the long run. I had the same concerns, Jim, that you did about how can we cut two-point-four million dollars from our budget and then add these new positions? Everything is pretty cost-neutral, except for the communications manager, but if we get more students to come back, that will pay for that position. So it's, it's a little bit of a risk, um, but what we've talked about in, in Personnel today was that we feel like, you know, it's a risk versus rewards, and where do we want to put our, our dollars? So who's in the queue? Anna, I think you're up.
My question about, is about the School Safety Coordinator. Um, which school would that person be at? Um, I'm assuming high school, because it has George on there. Um, and then, how does this interact with or overlap with the police liaisons? Um, especially if this person is doing crisis management? Um, do we have the potential to reduce some of the police liaison, um, contract as a way to fund this? Or what's the plan there?
Yeah, to answer your first question, Anna, the, uh, position would primarily be based out of the high school, uh, but then he or she would have some district-wide crisis management responsibilities. So that would be developing and revising our crisis management plan, uh, as well as, you know, attending trainings for that, and then also providing training for administrators uh, and other employees in the district. So, um, essentially, it's based on the high school, you know, plus a little bit extra for the district. The, um, what was your second, uh, question, Anna?
How does this interact with the Red Wing Police Department, um, Resource Officer position?
Yeah, in my mind, at least right now, um, you know, the, uh, reducing the police liaison position is not part of the recommendation. Um, you know, it, it would, uh, you know, potentially, I suppose it could be in the future, uh, but it would depend a lot on who is hired, uh, and exactly what that person brings to the table. So, uh, that's not part of the plan right now, it's not part of the recommendation. Um, the, uh, the school liaison officer, uh, has not in the past developed, uh, the crisis management plan or handled, uh, day-to-day issues in the school district. And they really shouldn't do that. That should be a school employee who is monitoring the hallways and developing relationships with families and, you know, providing, uh, safety and security, you know, for, for our students and staff. Uh, the police liaison has a, a different role, so they're related, but not related.
I'm sold on the School Safety Coordinator, not as sold on the Police Resource Officer, especially when you explain it like that. So, I mean, I realize that's not the, the issue on the table, but I guess I would rather put money in this bucket than that bucket, personally.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Nemnich is not on this call right now, but I can share that, you know, one of the things that he's concerned about is now we're having six grades up here at the high school. So there's a bunch more kids here, and, um, with seven passing times in a day, there's, there's a need for more supervision up here. And so this person, um, would continue to be a student monitor, but also be trained in crisis management. They would support staff in learning how and knowing how to de-escalate students in a crisis. There'd be, um, more connections with home and families and parents ongoing. Um, and there's, there's a lot to manage here at the high school. And so while we're, we're not having a student monitor or a teacher substitute, those two positions combined can pay for this one position. Um, and like Jackie said, there's not a need as much for, um, having, um, substitutes here on our payroll, because during, we did that because of COVID, because nobody wanted a substitute because of the pandemic. And so we had to sweeten the pod and say, yes, you get a full-time job and you can be here, and we'll find something for you to do every day. But we may not have that need anymore. So that's why that, um, teacher substitute position, um, would be used for paying for this spot, as I understand it, right?
That's your calculations, Jackie?
Uh, it would not be the perm sub position, I think you're talking about, but it would be the, our staff subbing on their prep, the reduction in math.
Right, gotcha. Uh, Jennifer, you're in the queue.
Um, just in response to the School Safety Coordinator thing, uh, similar to what Pam said, and I had some of the same questions. Um, and, um, one thing that Mr. Nemnich said is that this School Safety Coordinator would work with the, um, safety officer. Um, he would obviously still be there, but that they would work together. Um, and then also, um, one of the things that this safety coordinator, one of the responsibilities would be to be trained in PBIS, to really know how, what PBIS is. And also, uh, building relationships with students, just having someone else being in the building that's really building their relationships, um, that right now, the Resource Officer can't always do because of responsibilities. So, um, that was one thing that really sold me on that. Uh, if I could just mention the communications position, I would have to say that, um, I'm a huge proponent of this. I, I, um, was very excited to see the Communications Manager on here, um, because I feel that this is something that our district has needed for a long time. Um, one of the things that Anna and I have been working on is figuring out how to connect with the community. Nikki's been working on that, um, a lot as well, and, um, I mean, all of us have. Um, but more recently, that has been our focus, and I feel like this position is, um, someone that can really help us do that, make those connections to the community, get feedback from parents and, um, students, um, and help us moving forward with that. Um, building trust in the community, and I think that this is crucial for that. Also, the idea that this person can, um, really help us, hopefully, increase enrollment is huge. Um, that is key for us right now, so that we can increase our funding. Um, and I think this position is critical for doing that, to go out into the community, share everything, all of the amazing things that we are doing, um, to pull students back and hopefully pull more students in. So I, I really think that this position is critical, and, um, I believe we should pass all of these.
Holly?
Uh, thank you. Um, I have a concern about putting two classes together for one teacher to sub. That's a huge concern to me. And it could be a class of four and a class of eight. Put them all in the same room, that would be twelve students on their computers, that's not a big deal. But if you're looking at a situation where you have twenty students and fifteen students, and that one person has to sub, that only increases the need for a Student Safety Coordinator, which, how are, I, are we now trying to create a situation so we can justify one?
Oh.
Because that, to me, is ridiculous, that we would combine two classes for one teacher to sub when it's their prep. I would be livid if I got a call from the office saying, hey, can you use your prep to sub this class? No. No, I don't want to use my prep. Some teachers do, I do know that, that some teachers do that. But that's creating an environment that increases the need, and I don't understand that dichotomy. We should be working in classroom situations to make it nicer and gentler and commer- for classroom teachers and for students, so that need doesn't have to be. So I'm, I'm really struggling with that piece now, having heard that. And I did read through some of this earlier, it seems like on paper, oh, yeah. But being in the experience of being asked to sub? No. Absolutely not. So, um, that's a huge red flag for me, that that's one of the ways to justify the cost. If we were looking at reducing the SRO time, that's one thing, but we're not. So, and we're not even adding a mental health component to that. PBIS is one thing, that's not mental health. And kids that are in crisis or having issues in the hallway, it, it's been shown time and time again that they need a mental health component to help them address that. We have three, we have two, we have a principal, two assistant principals, an athletic director. We have this very heavy group of people. I don't understand why there isn't already a school safety plan that addresses what they're saying they need. And seventh grade isn't going to be in there very long, is my understanding? So I do understand the ESER funds and the two-year thing, but what I just heard now is a huge red flag for me. And, you know, if, if Mr. Nemnich was on the call, he could maybe explain it differently, but I have been called into several times, hey, can you sub this class? Honestly, I have to do it, because it's for kids. But I also have kids that I have to teach and that I have to prep for. And I have parents I'm responsible to in those classes. So I don't say that that's a safe answer or fair. And that's kind of what I have to say on that one. Um, the communications, I, I hear it loud and clear, I don't disagree. I'm just not so sure I'm ready to put money towards it after we had the cut. So, I do like Jim's idea that we just go line by line, one at a time. Um, and I do appreciate all the work that's been put into this, to try to figure things out. So, thank you.
Carson?
You know, would you, uh, like to, to start going, uh, position by position? So at least we can address some of them and then keep going? I, I don't mean to usurp the discussion at all, but...
I think that makes the most sense, actually. So, let's go back to the Adult Program Coordinator. That's a position that's being reinstated, it's, um, it's already a budgeted position, so that's a break-even one.
So do I make a motion to, do I make a motion to reinstate Adult Program Coordinator position?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Anna, you may just second, any other discussion? All right, we will start a roll call vote with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Garrix?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tipt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that position passes seven zero. Next position, School Safety Coordinator.
And, uh, if, uh, the board is gonna consider kind of the whole package for this particular position, uh, there'd be two bullets. Uh, first should be hire a School Safety Coordinator under non-classified Group C and eliminate a student monitor position at Red Wing High School, because they're tied together. Uh, there are also some other budgeted, uh, adjustments, like for substitutes and that kind of thing, uh, but we can do that internally. Um, you know, this would, these are the two items that would require board action.
Discussion. Somebody ready to make a motion?
If not, we can go to the next position, and then we can always circle back if we want.
The only thing that I'll just say before we move on is that, um, you know, at some point, I do, I hear what you're saying, Holly, because I, I think that's a, a worst-case scenario, like, I don't think that's gonna be a regular routine thing that happens every single day. That's not a great answer, but, um, that's what I understood, is that that's not gonna be a routine thing. I think that's, if somebody gets into a major bind, there's a backup. You're right, I don't like that. Um, but I also have to trust that Principal Nemnich knows this building and knows the needs of this building. And it felt like this was a big enough need to figure out a way to fill it. Um, so, you know, I'm struggling with both of those sides of that issue. Like, he knows the needs, he sees it. Uh, we have been talking about Personnel Committee for the last, what, three months, maybe?
You brought it up last time.
Okay, so, so for two meetings. So, I mean, maybe we need more time to mull that over, but, um, yeah, who's in there? Jennifer? Holly?
I, I do want to say that, um,
Arlen was in there.
Your, is Arlen in? Oh, who was it?
Yeah, sorry, Arlen, you're in there first, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Can you break down just this part that you mentioned, Carson? What we're going to not be paying? What we're going to not be paying for, the one position we eliminate, and what the new position will cost us? So, this safety coordinator, not steward or manager, what is the cost, and what is the savings?
Yeah, and if I could pass it over to Jackie, who actually worked with George on the proposal, and she can give you the recap.
Yep, give me one second, and I will pull it up on the screen here. Well, we costed about a middle-of-the-road scenario. It could be more, it could be less, this was kind of the mid-range on the band. It would cost about $60,000, is what we were considering. It costed with the health insurance. We would assume, we would retain the one permanent sub the high school has with TOC, and they would have another, still have $14,000 remaining to cover any, if we still need additional teachers to sub during their prep. So, as it comes out, it is break-even.
Complete break-even?
It would cost us five cents. I'm going to call it break-even.
The other thing that I had talked about in the personnel committee is, this is something that, I mean, if we were to say yes to this, I want a full report on a regular basis about how this is going. If we have to be dipping into that worst-case scenario, I think we need to pull back. But you don't want to do that in the middle of a school year, but, you know, this is something that we would have to continually monitor and make sure that it's working and makes sense.
Well, I don't think you would.
Yes, you're right.
I do remember Mr. Numanich saying, it is also somebody that could help with sports. And that is sitting with me now, while.
Oh.
He did say that at the other meeting, and at the time when he said it, I was like, help with sports? So, I don't know where that came from, or what that means, but it's not part of the job description.
Safety events, maybe?
It, maybe that, that could be it, I don't know. I still go back to the mental health piece. Like, if we're going to spend this money.
I'm just wondering, in the description? I don't, I've been looking, and I don't have it. I don't think, I think maybe the full description wasn't. Carson, I don't know if you can respond to that, but the mental health piece, I feel like in George's presentation, or in part of the, we had this personnel committee meeting, there was some more information about the relationship building.
That's not how mental health works. That's not somebody who, who's, you know.
Correct.
Specifically, we haven't seen anything. Right? I, I'm just really struggling with this need versus we need somebody who can help kids when they're in crisis. What is the protocol? Not somebody to put the fire out. Not somebody to call the police liaison, somebody that is trained in helping with crisis needs.
Which is the feeling that I got this position is, that that's exactly what this position is. So, I would be incorrect, but that is the feeling that I got for this position, is someone who's trained in crisis management and knows how to deal with those situations.
Gosh, and when she was here, could I?
And, well, here's, here's the note I have, helping to coordinate supervision and crisis management, de-escalation, and also training staff on de-escalation issues, or how to do that.
I think you're both right.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, like Jennifer and Pam said, it's relationship building, it's crisis management, it's de-escalating situations, you know, internally. But that's very different than mental health, and I think that's the point you're trying to make, so I think you're both.
We have a resource officer in the building, we can hire people to come in and train in de-escalation. We don't have more help for our social workers and our counselors, who we know are inundated with mental health themes. Why isn't that part of this?
Yeah, and I'm envisioning the possibility, and again, I cannot promise, but the possibility of including that in our full SRO plan. So, we've, we've gone through a lot of meetings with, well, we took feedback from community members about the initial, you know, safe learning plan, and we've been reaching out to community partners to get feedback. And, you know, I don't have all that information, but my assumption is that there will be a strong push for additional mental health supports, whatever they might look like. And so, I'm thinking that that would be part of an SRO plan, possibly. There's so many other needs, you know, I just don't know how it's going to rank.
Yeah, I could go on and on and on. Right, I kind of know where I'm feeling.
Yeah, yeah.
Jennifer, anything additional?
Yeah, I had a question about paying for it. It was brought up, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the other, other, if we do not use SRO funds, what is the other way that we can pay for this?
This one didn't have another.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's a technology integration.
Oh, the technology one, okay.
Yeah.
Anna.
There we go. Yeah, I personally don't feel like I have enough information to vote yes on this, because there are significant concerns. So, that's just kind of where I'm at with this one.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly cannot wait to get back to in-person meeting after that dialogue back and forth in the room there. So, I agree with Anna. I'd like to have us brought back to the next meeting, so I'll make a motion to table this to the next school board meeting, we'll bring back further information.
Say, Jim, can I?
There's no, there's no debate on a, that requires a second.
Regular meeting or special meeting?
Regular.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need a second for the table?
I.
Okay, so Jim, table, and Holly, second. So, we'll bring this back to the next meeting. Thank you. All right, technology integration and.
Need a vote, Madam Chair, we got to vote on that motion.
That's where you pay the big bucks, Jim. All right, we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Buck, I'm tabling that position.
Aye.
Mr. Derricks?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so seven-zero, that position is tabled. All right, now moving on to the technology integration and math teacher. Questions or comments?
Yeah, if I could just mention one thing, that if it's approved as requested, there'd be three things. First, we'd be hiring a full-time technology integrationist, we'd hire a full-time math teacher, and we'd reduce the Principal Pagel stipend as a Director of Technology to $7,500 per year. So, that would be the actual recommendation if we're doing what's listed.
Nikki, you're in the queue.
That was for the last one, that was before he made his motion. I'm good. No, I'm good, I'm good, we're good.
Sorry.
Holly? Thank you. Does this eliminate the Director of Technology?
No, the Director of Technology, well, Mike Pagel, you know, stepped up this past year, and the stipend at that time was 15,000 for the whole year. If those three bullets are approved, then that position would be reduced to $7,500 per year, and then the plan is that the second year, it would be zero, because a technology integrationist would take over all those responsibilities.
I meant for Mr. Johnson. That's where my head was, for Kevin.
Oh.
How does that position tie into this one?
Yeah, currently, the way we have it set up is that we have technology infrastructure in one area, and then technology integration in the other. And so, Kevin would still remain as the Director of Buildings, Grounds, and Technology, that's part of his role. And he oversees Charlie and Julie with infrastructure stuff. So, that would, that would not be impacted by this at all. And then, as far as the education is concerned, we have the $15,000 stipend for Mike Pagel, who requested that that be reduced, he wants to transition out. And then, we have Tony Kashi working part-time as an integrationist, technology integrationist. So, we have the infrastructure, and we have the education. So, the proposal is to increase time for technology integration, or the education side of the technology.
They're challenging to combine?
You know, there are some school districts that try to combine that work, but I will say that it's very challenging to find somebody with the dual skill sets. So, and I've worked in school districts that have that, and I know in one particular case, there was a teacher who had passion about technology, but had to learn the infrastructure along the way, and I will tell you, that's very challenging. And the opposite is true. You know, if there's somebody who understands network systems, and installing software, and doing those kinds of things, does not mean that they can show teachers how to teach a lesson on technology. They're very different skill sets. So, it can happen. I think that's very challenging to, to us, though.
This job is, this is where we have the backup for the SRO funds, right? So, it's a two-year plan?
Yeah, the, one, one thing that is possible is that our preference would be to code this position, part of this position, to achievement and integration plan, but we have to go through a process and get state approval before we can say, yes, it's going to be paid for out of achievement and integration. If that does not happen for whatever reason, then we'd like to use SRO funds to pay for it. So, the former plan, achievement and integration, would be an ongoing program. The, if we have to rely on SRO funds, then it's a two-year program.
The other thing I was thinking about is, really, when we talked about our referendum promises, when we went out for the last referendum, we talked about how technology was a big piece of what we were going to use our money for, and we've purchased all these great Chromebooks, and we've got one-on-one, but we really do, I mean, as part of that plan, we need to have somebody who's teaching teachers how to utilize the technology in their classrooms. And yes, we threw everyone to the fire this last year and said, figure it out, here you go, quick, you've got two weeks to figure it out. And now, this would be a great resource, I think, for teachers. It's important, it's needed. It's one of those things that we can communicate through our communications manager, that this is something that we are offering, that we're dedicated, and we mean what we say when we said we're going to integrate and use our technology, it's the way of the future. And so, I, you know, I'm really all for this piece, just thinking, what really pushed me over the edge was the referendum promises. It's one thing to give everybody Chromebooks, and teachers extra hardware, but how do we support them in using it to the best of their ability for their curriculum? So, that's, that's really where I'm at.
Anna?
In general, I am supportive of this. My question is where the technology integration specialist's job would live, because Tony Kashi, you know, is a high school teacher, great understanding of the dynamics there. Mike Pagel's an elementary principal, great understanding of the dynamics there, but those are very different worlds. So, if we're talking about putting this in one position, I'm just wondering how that structure is going to go, so we're not, you know, shortchanging any of our, our students.
That's a, that's a great question. If we had unlimited supply of money, we would have multiple technology integrationists. That's how important, you know, these positions are, because we want to give the resources to our teachers to do the best they can in classrooms. You know, Mike Pagel, regardless of if he gets a stipend or not, will have his hands on the technology program one way or the other. You know, that's just how he is, that's his, that's, he studied that in postgraduate work, you know, all those kinds of things, so he'll still be involved. We also expect all of our principals to understand the basics of good instruction via technology. You're right, though, I mean, Tony is a high school teacher. This past year, because he was also a part-time math teacher at the high school, he was really focused almost entirely out of the high school. Next year, you know, I'm not sure where his office is going to be, but we would expect him to visit all classrooms. In addition to that, we can still keep our, you know, smaller technology stipends that we give to teacher leaders in the different sites, and we still have our, our media and technology pairs, too, who can provide more of the hands-on technical support.
Well, that's something I brought up, too, in the personnel committee, is do we still need those building liaisons? If we have an integrated, you know, somebody in the whole district overseeing all of that, and the short answer would be yes, but that's something that, you know, we can monitor over this next year, and if they're not being well utilized, or if that's something that this person could take on those questions and those needs, then, you know, we can save some more money by reducing those stipends. We just don't know.
Anyone like to make a motion on this position? I could make the motion on our full-time technology integrationist, hire a math teacher, and reduce Principal Pagel's stipend. Do I have a second? I can second that. Any other discussion? This time, I'll start a roll call vote with Mr. Derricks.
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes seven-zero. All right, concession stand manager.
You know, over the past few years, we've gone through several different ways of providing concession stand management, and so the recommendation that's presented tonight is to hire concessions manager at $4,500 per year. And that recommendation really came from Brent Lexfool, Paul Hartman, Amy French was involved, as well as Jackie and myself. So, we really looked at some different scenarios and different salary amounts, and we kind of landed at the $4,500 per year. So, in past years, you know, we hired someone by the hour, and then we offered somebody a small stipend, assuming that she would be able to do some work during her regular work time. And, you know, I, I think we need to pay higher, you know, to be fair. So, $4,500 is a starting, or is kind of what we're proposing for this year, but we recognize that we have to, first, we want to be good stewards of the tax dollars, and then also, we want to make sure we're fair to employees, and so we're going to monitor that during this year and see if adjustments need to be made in salary for subsequent years. Also, I'll point out that we're hoping this is a temporary thing. If we get a food service operations manager position approved using food service funds, that person will be responsible for this work as well.
Holly, you're in the queue.
I would like to make a motion to hire concessions manager at $4,500 per year.
Motion made by Holly, do I have a second?
Second.
Anna, just any discussion? We'll start our roll call vote with Ms. Astendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
And Mr. Derricks?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes seven-zero. And then, communications manager.
And again, this is another combo proposal, so it'd be to hire a fourths communications manager under the Program Directors and Supervisors Group C, and then also incorporate the area advisor position into the communications manager position. In terms of, yeah, I think we kind of talked about that already earlier this meeting, in terms of why it's being proposed, and then how we're planning to pay for it. The biggest amount of resources would come out of the SRO funding. So, it's about $65,000, I believe, out of SRO funding that would help pay for this position. Because of that reliance, you know, right now, there's a two-year plan to have that position, because we'll have SRO funds for two more years at least. And, and then after that, we'll, we'll have to make some decisions about, you know, extending that into the future. I'm very confident that if we find the right person, and we set up the structure appropriately, that we will greatly value that work, and I'm very confident that it'll continue in the future. And I'm very confident that it'll continue in the future. But I want to be open and honest about the finances and, you know, right now, I'd rely on Esser funds for two years.
I will make the motion to hire a fourths communications manager under program directors and supervisors group C and incorporate area advisor position into communications.
Do I have a second? Pam will second it. Any other discussion? Jim, Mr. Bryant?
I think Holly was in the queue first, I think.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Am I right?
Oh, my gosh. Went toward all together. Holly?
So I'm just going to clarify for the public, this position is being paid how?
Esser funds.
Esser funds. And those funds are already in our bank account.
We have, they are not in our bank account, but we have been allocated them, yes.
We've been allocated them. And they're under what column to be used? So if somebody says, well, why would you hire that and not this? What's the designation?
There has to be, we have to show a need based on COVID. And we believe that because of all the communication that occurred during COVID and has to continue now and in the future, we can justify that need.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and by far, that's the bulk of how it would be paid for. In addition, we've reduced the cost of our communications work by $12,000, incorporate the area advisor position, that would save $2,500, and then code 10% of the cost of community education and recreation. Because this person would support Dawn and her work with community as well. We also have some, we're exploring some other ways to help pay for it. I don't want to rely on those assumptions. I'd rather just rely on this plan here and then try to save some money elsewhere, too.
And I will say, you know, I, this one scares me just a little bit, but, you know, it really is an investment. I mean, Dawn Whiter has been a huge proponent of this. She talked about, you know, we have to invest in our school district, and we really do. And is it, is the risk worth the reward? That's kind of where I'm at with this. And everything in my heart says yes. Because we have a lot of wonderful things that we can showcase about our school district. There's Five Rivers, that's happening with online school, and this person can be able to help us break that and get the word out and really sell that program. We've got an operating referendum that's going to be coming up. And while that person cannot be the yes, yes committee, they, we need a strong message to get out, a strong, consistent message. And a communications manager is going to take a bunch of work, I think, off of our branch, bring him up to do more superintendency kinds of things. And it would be great if we could give the communications piece to somebody who, that's their expertise. And so I will, that's why I seconded the motion, and I feel strongly in support of this position. I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to pay for that and then some with the students that we get in our, and the Esser fund, or the, yeah, the Esser funds. Who is in the queue?
I think Jim.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't bring it up during the discussion because we were kind of all over the board on all these positions. I think, I think communications and promoting ourselves through different means is important. And I support getting it out there, the word out, the good things that we're doing, the things that we may need help in, the areas where we're growing with trying to find out things that we're going to be doing. My question really is, and I'm struggling with approving this based upon it's going to be a supervisor and a manager position. Who are they going to supervise and who are they going to manage? And if they're, I didn't read the job description, but I don't know of other people, since we're taking away the aerial, airy advisor position, why don't we just get somebody that can get out there and work communications? Why do we have to turn it into a supervisor position?
Yeah, if, I'll just answer your question. Jill Rieberg, who does work on our website, would report to this person. And then the communications manager would also work directly with any consultants that might be involved. So, for example, Unleash Consulting, if we do work with other entities for brochure design, or website design, or a number of other things. So in a way, that would be the reason why it's called a communications manager.
Okay. But I still don't think that's enough to justify putting somebody in a higher salary when they could do all those things without being a supervisor manager. So I think you have, we have enough across-the-board managers and supervisors in place to handle people. Somebody could, this person could answer to that. So I just share that with you, and if that's the line you're going, then I'm just, I'm not going to support the position based upon where they're putting the position. I support the program and what they want to do, if that makes sense. So I think we can, so, thank you.
Jennifer?
Two things. With that, I don't know, I think Dawn is on the call. I guess I'd be interested in having her, Dawn, if you don't mind, being put on the spot. Just talk a little bit about this position, how you have, how to personnel inform about this. Not sure if you're still there. I would request that. And then also, the position was banded this way. So there was a process that the district went to in order to determine that this was the best place for this person to be positioned as a program director and supervisor in group C. So in my mind, it wasn't like it was just decided by someone that this is where it needs to be. It went through the process of banning, these are the responsibilities that this person would have, and therefore, this is where they would fall into this category. So because of that, I agree with this. One other thing that I wanted to mention when Pam was talking about the importance of this job, one thing we talked about at personnel committee was the idea of having someone that can kind of put out fires, respond to the needs in communication. If something happens on social media, or something happens anywhere, or something happens in a building, we have someone who knows who to go to, who to talk to, how to share information with the public. So this one piece that hadn't been mentioned, that I think is crucial for this position.
I'll just follow up. Thanks for bringing up the banding part. I'm very familiar with banding. We, other areas, they call it pay equity. A position is banded by who puts that information together to give to Rob, Mr. Bjorklund, Bjork, Bjorklund, I believe his name is. That's how he bans it, and he goes by the guidance of the people submitting it. So that's my point. My point isn't the person, but I just think it, I think we need to, if we're going to start off something else, we're going to just jump into another supervisor position. I struggle with that. So I just share with you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I am still on the call. I mean, I'm still in the meeting. I did want to just share that I did write the job description and I did share it with Bob Bjorklund. He banded and graded it. We didn't go in with any assumptions. All that we did was highlight the areas that this person would work. I know the personnel committee had an opportunity to read the job description. So it is a significant position that we'll be working closely with leaders in the community and also leaders in the school district. So in addition to, we do have other people in those, the program supervisors that don't supervise or manage anyone. This person does manage a few people, but the responsibilities of this position is significant. They have to have one foot in the district and one foot in the community. And they have a lot of responsibilities, both internally and externally. We're asking this individual to do a lot on 80% time. And, you know, again, I could share some of the responsibilities, but it's a higher-level position. And I believe that it was banded and graded correctly for what we're asking this person to do.
You done?
Holly? I did read through the description, and it did say a master's is preferred, a master's degree is preferred.
Correct.
Right, so a master's in journalism, communication, public relations, that I do understand because of what is expected from the person applying for the position. We have been, we have had people, we, you know, do this work that weren't at the master's level, per se, putting out the fires, monitoring Facebook, monitoring the Instagram, the Red Wing School webpage. That's a lot of work for a couple people to kind of communicate back and forth and try to do. My hesitancy is taking money from them who have been putting in the hard work and giving it to somebody else to manage. We have had people that have put a tremendous amount of time in our website, on our Facebook, and, you know, to say, well, all the work you've been doing is great, no one pays anybody else more to do. And I'm not talking about the community. I'm just talking about the basis that we've been trying to do here in Red Wing. So I'm a little bit hesitant about hiring this position, knowing that we've had people who have really, really hard to try to do some of this work. And I don't know what that means.
And if I could, yeah, just to clarify, we still want Jill Rieberg to continue
Correct.
entering data onto the website. That's what she's done for many years, and we want to continue that as long as she wants to, and I think that she does.
I, no, I just know that around the clock, people are working on, you know, technology and putting out fires and all of that kind of stuff. And I understand the need for the position because it's going to multiply into different areas and honor the work also of the people that have been doing it.
And as far as like social media, you know, this plan would, you know, keep Kristen Bray still doing the high school Facebook page, you know, as long as it works in Georgia's schedule. And, you know, we have different buildings still doing some of that work kind of independently from each other. And so that may continue, but it'd be under one person who kind of oversees the whole effort instead of being mismatched, you know, throughout the system. And also, we're planning, at least for now, to continue our contract with Unleash Consultants, but we would lower that payment to them. And so we'd have to adjust who doesn't want. But they've done some very good work with our social media in terms of identifying topics and then giving the message out. They do the weekly e-news that's sent to, I think, all, but we have to make some adjustments there. Nikki's in the queue.
Thank you, Nikki.
What we're looking for is, we're looking for some consistency in messaging. We have 20 different webpages. We have all different kinds of people that send out messages. We don't have consistent people that are answering crises or misinformation. So what this individual would do is gather all of those things that are representing our district and bring it under one umbrella and make sure that the consistent message is out there and there's no misinformation. Sometimes it's added, we add to the misinformation. Sometimes we don't give correct information. And so what this person would do would be help to pull that all together and monitor that. Social media is a wonderful thing, but it can also be very tricky. And it can also be something that can cause us a lot of long-term issues if we get out incorrect information or don't stop some misinformation that could be very, make us vulnerable. So I think that is what this person's role would be, is to just spearhead a comprehensive message and find out who all those players are. Every time I open social media, I find another Red Wing School District page, and who's monitoring this? And, you know, it's not that it's wrong, but it's, it's just, you know, what's really ours and what isn't? Potentially, could there be something out there that we have no relationship to? Of course, there could. So, you know, that would be part of this person's responsibility. Jill also puts a lot of stuff out on social media, so not just Unleash Consultants. She's putting postings out and, you know, I just can't tell you, if she's on vacation out of state, if I call her at 11 o'clock at night, she'll take something off that is misinformation. And she's always somebody that's accessible. And you just can't buy that nowadays. And she still has a passion for it, and she, she loves part of what she does. So we definitely are not going to end that relationship at all. It would just provide her some support. Sometimes she struggles to know, where do I go from here? And so this would be, this person would pull together a comprehensive strategic communications plan. Well, you have to have a skill set. You also have to have some writing ability. You have to know how to speak to your audience. So that is why we're looking for someone with strength in journalism or writing, so.
Nikki?
I don't disagree. Communications is a real-world problem, and we should be having somebody filling the position. One thing I just struggle at is looking at that base price right away. You're going to be expecting to deal with community leaders, right? We all know, well, we don't all, but some of us do know how hard it is to get into a tribal community because of a trust factor. So who do they rely on? Me. So essentially, in order to get you to get, gain that trust, I'm doing all the work while you're trying to build those relationships. So I would be more inclined to see that position to be added, you know, our room to grow up to that price, you know? Because in the meantime, you know, I'll find it dandy when Nikki gets off school board in four years, who else is going to be communing with Prairie Island? I'm not, I'm not going to be easy accessible. So this is where all you other people are going to be learning how to build those relationships with, too. So in the meantime, you have me to utilize me for four years at a very low price, may I add. But like I just say, I don't disagree, but we also need room to grow because, like, I believe it was Holly or somebody else, I imagine, we've already got a lot of key players in that communications role that are, you know, it is choppy and sloppy, maybe? And with this position, it's just, I, like I said, I would like to see it grow. I don't disagree with that that can't be the price because it is a lot of work to finagle and communicate and make sure, that is exhausting, hands down, not going to lie. But like I said, if we're integrating that community engagement piece, there's a lot of communities that have to have that build trust, and that takes time. I'm very proud of being part of Prairie Island and allowing non-Indigenous people come into our community and helping them gain the trust of our community members so they can do the work that they're effectively doing. Because it is exhausting to me to always have to communicate back and forth, everybody make sure everybody knows what's going on and yada, yada, yada. It's just easier to build, help everybody else build those relationships. So that's just my impetus as not a master's, but just being community raised and with community engagement and communications under my belt, grandfathered and traditionally.
And I agree, Nikki, that's a very important thing. Building trust is a big part of what this person will do. I also think that we want to maybe talk to Jackie a little bit because this is deceiving. This also includes a benefit package. And so when you're looking at that $85,000, that would include benefits, but Jackie could speak more to that. So I, then I wanted to clarify that because I don't know if any of the other positions included the benefits when we're looking at a person's responsibilities and jobs and everything. So Jackie?
Yeah, but all of the, everything we've looked at tonight is including benefits. So again, we banded it similarly, took the mid-range position, where it could be higher, could be lower on salary, a mid-range. Program Director Group C is a step eight, has 15 steps, so I just picked step eight. Could be higher, could be lower based on experience. Year-round, or year-round 32 hours a week, about $53,000 salary. You see the benefits there. Because of how much this person will be traveling between our buildings, many of the directors and supervisors in this group get a vehicle allowance. I assume this person would get a vehicle allowance as well. The reduction in cost there, and as proposed, it would cost us $62,462 out of our Esser funds.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? There's a motion on the table made by Jennifer. There's a motion on the table made by Jennifer, seconded by Pam. Any, Arlen?
Based on what I've heard, that just threw me over the top to support this. I thought the 85 was a salary. If I hear that salary and benefits, I'm totally behind this.
You know, I will say, I've been with you for almost six years and this is, position has been on the table every single year. And it keeps getting pushed up and pushed up and pushed off. And, you know, like you've said, Dawn, I think it's time to invest in our, I know it costs a lot of money, but it's time to invest. I mean, we'll also have some, some pretty good competition coming up with charter schools and kids going online elsewhere. I mean, and so, you know, we also have to think about that and we don't want to lose more kids. We want to gain more kids. Jim?
Thank you. This has been beat up pretty bad. So I think that, you know, the 85 is, is, remember it's .8. So I, I truly think it should be a full-time position. We could probably get somebody at 85 for 100% that wasn't in banded where it was. So I'll just share that. I think it's more of it than a .8 position myself, so. But, uh, call the question.
I agree, Jim. I do agree with that. I think it's a full-time position, but we had to start somewhere.
Well, we can't, we can't. All of a sudden now, if we put in a supervisor position, if we add another 20% to it, now you're over 100 some thousand, 600,000, however, six figures. So if you start not in that position and give them the 80, 85 for 40 hours a week, you're, you're ahead, you're ahead of the game. Same money, 20% more work, so.
All right, we'll call the question and vote on the motion on the table to approve this position. We'll start with Ms. Tower. Ms. Tipton?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that passed with this five. Library discussion is complete. We appreciate the great dialogue. Last up is finding the basic topics. So I won't post them. Any other topics that you'd like to see that you want to talk about now? Or you can always email any of us those topics. All right, then I need a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
Moved by Holly, seconded by Jim. We'll start the roll call vote with Ms. Tipton.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:17.
Have a good week, everybody. Goodbye.